And I will open up council time for Wednesday, April the 21st. And we'll first approve of the minutes of the last meeting, the April 14th meeting.
I move approval with a request for one small addition. And that would be that under the first action that is listed to approve the six points in the VBLM letter, add from the private development sector, please. So we know which letter.
Okay.
Second, that amendment.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded with an amendment to the minutes of the meeting to approve these minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Post? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to new business, stormwater manual update.
Good morning, council. So stormwater manual that we have is an important document for us to utilize during the design and construction of all the projects around the county and is to stay in compliance with NPDS permits. We have our staff from Clean Water that would like to go over the changes that we made for your consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to either Jeff or Rod.
Hi, this is Rod. Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Well, the Clark County manual is one of six manuals in the state of Washington that are approved for use by the Department of Ecology. It's included in the current Phase One Stormwater Permit, which covers the four counties and Seattle and Tacoma. And we're updating the manual for several reasons. One is our stormwater permit, the 2019 permit requires us to do that. And then in the use of the manual over the last five or six years, we've noticed some technical or minor policy changes that have been discovered. And then there are numerous minor edits and clarifications that have been submitted by manual users. And we're obviously doing it now because the manual needs to be implemented in July of 2021. And this mandatory update provides an opportunity to open up the code and manual and make revisions to them. So the the current manual, the 2015 manual, oh, you can advance the slides, I'm sorry. That would be slide four. The 2015 manual was created to sort of clean up the code and manual situation that we had back then. We had about 30 pages of code and maybe 100 to 150 page manual. And then we also referenced the state manual. And during that period, we had extensive public involvement with the Technical Advisory Committee that provided a lot of really useful input into how the manual was created and arranged. And so for this particular update, we had to send a draft to Ecology by June of 2020 of those significant changes to the manual. And before we did that, we put it out on on the web and notified stakeholders. And then in December, we put another public draft out and notified the stakeholders again, which includes the 1,200 person planning commission interested party and the interested parties. And we've received very little comment on the manual, most of it's technical in nature. So like I said, there's ecology mandated changes. And the ones of significance are it lowers the financial threshold for applying the current stormwater standards to redevelopment projects. And it's kind of technical, but basically it changes the valuation of of the project improvements from comparing them to the total site assist value, which is the parcel value. And now it switches it to the project site value, which could be a small portion of a parcel. Another thing it does actually that might be helpful for some projects is it provides a more liberal ability to move facilities offsite if they discharge the same receiving water, which could be a significant water body like Salmon Creek or a tiny little tributary to Salmon Creek, depending on where the site is. Another significant change is that it completely redoes.
Excuse me, Rod. This is Jeff breaking in. I I don't see that we're moving slides, so you may need to be calling out the slide.
So I'm flat now.
Thank you. Yep.
I'm actually reading from a paper here. The screen is so small. Yeah, the wetland changes are mandatory. And according to our wetland experts at the county, it actually is clearer than the previous wetland or the current wetland requirements. But it does require some projects to do groundwater monitoring or water level monitoring prior to designing their wetland or their stormwater facilities. And we've updated our erosion control requirements to match the current ecology construction stormwater general permit. That's the permit that applies to projects that are over an acre in land disturbing activity while the actual construction activity is going on. We added 17 source control BMPs to Book Three, which is basically pollution prevention BMPs, types of things. Those are examples would be like a roof over a fueling station or putting a roof on a dumpster enclosure. These changes are fairly minor. And the permit includes a sunset date for projects that were approved under the previous permit. And so now we've added language that sunsets projects approved under the current manual in July of 2026, if they haven't started construction. And some county driven changes of significance are that we've made unpermitted connections to the county storm sewer. Oops, sorry, six, slide six, please. Well, you've got it. To the county storm sewer system, projects that connect to it without an approved stormwater site plan would be considered prohibited discharges under our water quality ordinance. And we clarified the code to required record drawings for engineered LID BMPs. That was oversight in the previous code. And another minor change is we moved what's called the zero rise floodplain requirement into the flood hazard areas code. It was previously, it still is in the stormwater manual. Next slide, please. So here's the list of examples, I would say, of county technical and policy changes to the manual. There's a table of manual changes that we prepared that lists all of the changes. There's about, gosh, 130 of them altogether. And a lot of them, as I mentioned, are insignificant or winter clarifications. One thing we're doing is we're allowing the use of the ecology construction stormwater permit for compliance with county standards. That makes things easier for people. They can use the same exact permit requirements for ecology as they can for the county. And we allow people to use road control BMPs from the ecology manual for projects that are regulated by Clark County that are less than an acre. And we're just allowing the use of permeable asphalt in roads because it has been causing a lot of problems with failure to properly infiltrate water or it just comes apart. And another thing we've added to help out residents that have HOAs is a requirement to produce a cost estimate of how much it's going to cost to maintain the facility that they own or facilities. And for certain projects in the rural area, it allows the use of LID BMPs instead of modeling for larger projects in the rural area. And we, one of the comments we received early on was there was some confusing language in post-construction soil testing for bioretention facilities. So I worked with our folks in construction management to straighten that out. And there was some kind of a confusing, confusing use of the word "commercial agriculture" in the code and permit or code and manual. And so we changed that wording to just agriculture to simplify that. Another little thing is the manual requires a sign in every stormwater facility, but we often have bioretention facilities and roads. So we're just allowing a curb medallion. You've probably seen them. It's just a little medallion that says not to dump anything in there. And we added a chapter on.
Rod?
Yeah.
Can I go back one second to the commercial agricultural?
Yes.
Thing that was eliminated. What was confusing about it? And does this make it more onerous on people who are actually just growing a garden or something?
Yeah, garden is categorically exempt. Working the land is categorically exempt. The definition in the permit and the ecology manual for commercial agriculture is one that would be used for a tax deferral. So it talks about all sorts of existing activities on agricultural land that would allow it to be tax deferred. And so by simply using the term agriculture, it it makes it a lot simpler and less confusing.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up on that, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So so where is this in Title 40?
Yeah, the stormwater code is 4386.
Okay, because I'm a little bit confused on this because we were looking at this last December, I think. So I'm looking at both your table of changes that talks about removing the commercial agricultural description. Then I'm looking at the code revisions that was sent as well. And in in 4386010, it talks about the exemptions from requirements of this chapter. And one of those exemptions is C2, which is the construction of agricultural buildings. So I don't see any text change in that exemption. And I was thinking when we were looking at this in December, there was a proposal of the text change to include. And maybe I'm looking at it incorrectly. So there was addition of the language sole purpose of carrying out commercial agriculture activities. Is that in a different section? I'm just, I don't, there's just some discrepancy in what I'm seeing.
Thank you.
Places.
I think that's a categorical exemption. I don't have the code revisions in front of me.
Well, I just want to be sure that what we're seeing in both the code revision document and the table of changes is consistent in that we're not adding extra stormwater requirements on these permit exempt ag buildings. That's my concern.
No, that is, there's no change there.
Okay.
And Madam Madam Chair, if I could.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Kind of just as an overarching question, because obviously went through all the table of changes. There's a lot of them. And it's hard to digest each and every one. So I have three areas of questions. One is just generally, are we in any area exceeding the minimum or the mandatory requirements of state law or regulation by the Department of State Ecology? And have we gone and created our own additional requirements?
We don't have any requirements I can think of that go beyond the requirements of the NPDS Phase One permit. That's been our general policy.
Okay, thank you. And then on one area where I had sense or heard about some potential overreach, and I don't know where that sits, if there are any changes that impact that, assuming timberland inactive use forest road to access it. And then becomes in disuse because of, you know, they're letting the timber grow before they use the road. When they get to clearing it, regrading it, filling in the potholes, are there any changes that put either erosion or stormwater permit requirements on access to that existing forest road? Right. And I'm talking about a private, just a dirt grade graded road to access the timber.
If it's if it's forest practices, it's categorically exempt unless it's a land conversion or a forest conversion to a development project.
So is there a change that?
There's no changes. There's no changes.
Okay. And then the last area that I wanted to ask about regarding any potential changes is I, you know, I saw and I'm talking about a stormwater primarily runoff effluent, the unlawful discharge. And it's an area that I think either we're not, we have some underreach. So regarding watershed, and I'm going to focus on Lackamas Lake. Are there any changes at all that impact our ability to control or or look at weigh in on unlawful discharges into our watershed?
We have another code chapter. It's in Title 13, which is the old Public Works title. That's the water quality ordinance we adopted back in 1998 as a condition of getting our stormwater permit back then. And it's called the Water Quality Ordinance. And that has, it prohibits basically any discharge of pollutants into the county storm sewer or the waters of Clark County, including surface water and groundwater.
But regarding these changes, there's nothing to stormwater that impacts it one way or another?
No.
Okay. And then so as far as contaminants, do they include? Because I didn't quite see the definition of contaminants that was very specific. Does it include loading phosphorus nitrogen? Or is it talking about unlawful chemicals? I mean, is it more restrictive?
If we're referring strictly to Lackamas Lake, our code since, gosh, the mid 90s, requires phosphorus treatment for discharges to waterways in the Lackamas watershed. I don't know if that answered your question, but that's the main thing in the code that relates to development projects. The water quality ordinance in Title 13 relates to all activities.
Okay, thank you. I would, outside of this meeting, I would like to talk to you about that in greater detail, but not not this morning. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
I I just want to make a comment too, Rod. As you answered a question of, I think, what was Counselor Manji about? Does, do any of our codes or any of these changes exceed what state law requires? And your answer was it's a general practice that that they don't. And I just want to emphasize that that is really important that we do not exceed our state requirements and make additional requirements of our Clark County people. And furthermore, that when we do these updates on manuals, a stormwater manual, that that should be an opportunity to be looking at this to find out if we do in any way. So I just want to encourage you and your team that this is a constant, be be constantly alert to that. Because we have enough rules coming from the Department of Ecology that we need to abide by. And so we don't need any additional.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate what you're saying.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, go ahead.
That's the last slide, actually. There's one more slide that basically mentions there's a number of changes that are clarifications and updates, that type of thing. And we'll be updating the webpage with the adoption draft of the code and manual after this meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I thank you for the table of changes as well. It certainly makes it easier to to examine what's going on. So appreciate that.
Yes, it would be impossible to do without the table of changes.
I'm glad to agree. Are there any other questions or comments by the board? Okay, what is there anything? Do you need something from us right now?
Not really. This is just an update prior to the hearing.
To the hearing, okay.
Yep.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on then to councilor reports.
Councilor Olson.
Madam Chair, thank you. And again, I apologize for not getting this over to you until this morning, but Clark College reached out and is asking for our support for a letter to support a $1.5 million federal request for the advanced manufacturing equipment facility at Clark College at Boshma Farms. So they've sent over kind of a draft or template of a letter that we might support. So I thought I let Kelly Love know that I would bring this to the council for consideration. So that's that's what this is. I think I don't think we've had any other competing requests in terms of support for federal funds in this particular category. So I would just open it up for conversation and see if there was an interest in supporting this request of Clark College.
I if I could, just one second. I wanted to ask a question about Boshma Farms. I thought that they were putting off doing, the college was setting this aside. Is that not the case?
I I don't I don't think so. I think it's all funding related. So I think they're just waiting to to get additional, what funding they need to break ground on it. I think they've adjusted the focus of that particular location.
Okay, this equipment would presumably be for that location, and yet they haven't broken ground?
I actually don't know the status of the construction of that.
Yeah, I I don't think they have. But I mean, it was my understanding that they had put this on hold. So it's kind of surprising to see they're asking for equipment for non-existent.
Well, in the in the letter, it says that they're they're asking the state for the construction costs and then groundbreaking this fall.
Yeah, I didn't, I, yeah, I I did look closely at that letter, so.
So, Madam Chair, I don't know if they're just first out of the gate. I I don't know of any other competing requests by any other institution in our county, but I fully support Clark County's schools of higher education and and support the, I would sign on to a letter if if we can get everyone to agree on it.
I think that this is, I have no problem with signing on to this letter. You know, show support. Hopefully, they can get what they need. And this is really good for Clark County. So, yeah.
And I would agree as well.
Yeah, I always support community college, for sure.
And I appreciate the council's consideration on short notice. I should have gotten this to you last week. So my apologies, and I appreciate the consideration.
I'm glancing through the letter that that I I received from you, Julie, and I, or Counselor Olson, I'm sorry. And I am not seeing the section on the federal funding for the facility. What does it say about that?
I think it said that they're asking the state for the for the the construction.
Oh, the state, Washington State will cover construction costs totaling 50. And we anticipate a groundbreaking this fall, it says. Okay, yeah, I'm I'm supportive of of this certainly.
Just for clarification, it's actually a request for federal funding. The state budgets would be done at this point. This is under the federal labor HHS appropriations. So it does note in the letter that Washington State will be covering some of the costs. So there are state funds coming in for the cost to cover the groundbreaking this fall. But they're requesting an additional one and a half million dollars in a federal appropriation.
Yeah, I think we understood that part. It was just the breaking ground part and who's who's considering. So, okay. It looks like we can approve that. Do we? Is the letter okay as written?
Then. Yeah, I I think so unless.
Yeah. I think it works for me.
Okay, all right.
We can just attach our signatures and.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Okay, you're welcome. Other council reports? Just a couple of short comments. One is the port of Camas and Washougal has reported that there is going to be a United Precision Corporation, which is a California company that assembles machined metal seals that will be building out of the port. And it's good to note that they have engaged with workforce Southwest Washington and Clark College to attract individuals from underrepresented communities. And that was, I think, important to them in choosing this area. And then from CREDC, the Economic Development Group at the board meeting, I thought it was interesting that a number of people voiced concern about the enormously huge increase in construction costs, especially from lumber, but more than that. And it was having implications for some designs being scaled down. One of the other things that CREDC did was an industry intelligence survey where they asked them, what are the most important factors that make you decide to settle one place or another? And number one came out to be skilled labor availability. And number two was highway accessibility. Yeah, we're familiar with that one. Yes, indeed. Which I will put in a plug. Heritage Farms, the portion that is not used currently, is an absolutely great location for utilities and highway. That said, any other council reports? Work session request. It looks like we don't have any. Do we have any have come in since this agenda?
No, there's no request today.
Okay, Lindsay, do you have a report?
I do. One thing for you. So this is a thing similar to what Counselor Olson brought up regarding Clark College. So it's accurate to say that we we received a couple of additional communications regarding the congressional appropriations and specifically the earmarks. So we haven't seen congressional earmarks since the fiscal year 2010 federal budget. And so it's it's a work in progress to figure out exactly how they're going to do this earmark process, what that's going to look like. And so bear with me because I don't have all of the information as terms of how this is exactly going to work. But two things, we received one communication. Unfortunately, it was kind of at the last minute from Congresswoman Jamie Hura Butler's office for her process for congressional earmarks. She requested specifically that all of that information be in by last Friday. So because of the fact that we didn't have time to have a council discussion for that, what I did is I asked staff to at least put in for 179th and the 99th Street corridor improvements on the sidewalk. I did that because she's asking only for projects for which there's a matching fund and projects for which there is a council resolution in support of the project. So those were two projects for which we have a council resolution that's been done in terms of like approving the tip and those things. And we already have the matching funds that have been previously approved by council. So she's also requesting that there's a formal resolution in support of the specific project by the local government. So at this point, I would recommend that if you want to proceed with these two projects and a request to Jamie Hura Butler's office, that we do those formal resolutions in support of the project. If you don't want to proceed, we can let their office know, hey, the council wanted to kind of save our place in line, but we don't want to proceed with this, and we're withdrawing our request. So wanted to open that up. And then I have one other, we have Senator Murray's request. It's a different process, but wanted to open up that discussion first.
Comments on the resolutions for Butler's earmarks?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Are we, are we asking for a specific dollar amount, Lindsay, or what was the form of the communication back to Jamie's office?
So we, in terms of the the requested amounts, you know, realistically, only about two and a half million. you know, realistically, only about two and a half million is likely to be, I mean, that's kind of the cap of what they've historically done. So that was what the request that was sent. But we left it open to say, this is the project, this is a request, the total project amount is much greater than that, and we welcome support for any amount, you know, that she's willing to support.
I don't know why we would withdraw it. I think we've got it out there.
Yeah, I would not withdraw it. I'd just go ahead. That's my look at it, as long as they're doing earmarks, we might as well try and receive some, since the state gets a bunch of our sales tax money. That we ought to be keeping.
Madam Chair, if I can ask, so first of all, I do support moving forward with what you've already initiated. But my question goes to, does this only speak to infrastructure? Or could it include Vancouver Lake, Lackamas Lake cleanup projects, anything like that? Is it just?
Yeah, it definitely could, and I think that that may be better requested through Senator Murray's office, if only because we had that deadline with Jamie Hore-Bottler's office. And so we needed something for which the council had already approved the matching funds so that we could confidently go to her office and say, we have the funds, we know the council's supportive of the projects, here's the application. So that's the only reason that those two projects were chosen, it's just because of the deadline and the requirements that she set. But yeah, I think the next topic that I have for Senator Murray's office would be great for some of those other projects.
Thank you. Without objection, we'll go ahead and have you prepare some resolutions then.
I will put those on, the next hearing will be the May 4 hearing, so we'll put those resolutions on. And then the other one is, of course, Senator Murray's office. Her requested deadline is May 14, so we have a little bit of additional time. She's trying to hold more firmly to the two and a half million dollar cap. With the exception of projects that are eligible for the Tiger and Build Grants, which are transportation projects. But otherwise, you know, virtually any projects that would be eligible for a congressional earmark can be requested. And she is not requesting a local government match. So that's a really big thing. So with this one, there are a number of projects. We can, of course, put in 179th and 99th, we already have. She had her transportation project list come out a while ago when Congress first started talking about a transportation improvement package. So she has all of the transportation projects already, though if there are new ones, we can certainly add that. But, you know, we could add, I know there've been discussions about the Battleground Aquatic Center. There have been discussions about the railroad, though of course, I would hesitate for that discussion depending upon whether it needs to be an executive session. Vancouver Lake, so park projects, I know, Councillor Olson, you've been interested in the Lewis and Clark Trail. The problem is, we're really going to need something for which we have an identifiable project. The request amount needs to be less than two and a half million. It needs to be closer to completion. This really shouldn't be first dollars in. And so projects that are kind of ready for that completion mark here within the next couple of weeks. But wanted to see if there are any that you wanted to submit to Senator Murray's office.
Madam Chair, I think we probably need some time to think about this. We don't have to, since we have a couple of weeks to submit it. I'd like to, you know, kind of ponder this a bit over the next week or so.
I have a question about her transportation list. Was I-5, the I-5 bridge on her list at all?
Yes, yeah, that one was put on the list, and that we've mentioned to her office. That one, we didn't put in as a Clark County specific project because it's really a regional and statewide project. And Brian's comment was, yeah, we're aware. So they're well aware of the need for the federal funding for the bridge. And that is going to be a significant enough federal project that that's really going to lie within the transportation package and not within a congressional earmark under the general transportation or the general budget process because two and a half million isn't going to go very far for the bridge.
Yeah, and so my thought on the bridge too, if we were ever going to speak up on that topic, it would be great to get an earmark to start planning an additional corridor as related to the I-5, what I consider that a regional corridor, not just limited to the I-5 bridge. The other is our railroad, you know, we definitely need some significant money to improve and get up to code the entirety of our short rail.
Yeah, it'd be great to get that north section worked on further. Madam Chair. And my question about the I-5 bridge has no, is not loaded in a sense. I was just curious if anybody, it wouldn't have been a Clark County perhaps, but I was just curious whether that was on her list. And so I'm glad to hear that it is because otherwise we'd just talk, talk, talk until nothing ever happens, and we don't have any money and et cetera. So how about cleaning up, how about maintenance funds for WashDOT to be able to clean up the sides of our highways? Because I've been told by WashDOT, crickets, I've been told by WashDOT that it's maintenance fund that they have to use in order to clean up all these encampments along that corridor, their various roads. That might be something we think about. Okay, anything else?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councillor Lynn.
I think for these particular appropriations, and Lindsay, I've already mentioned this to you, but I'll say here, I hope, you know, we can ask Vanessa Shop about what there might be in the pipeline for affordable housing, community services, those kinds of projects that they could use a little boost to get to the finish line. And, you know, I also support Councillor Medveji's idea of looking into how we can use some of these funds. If there's a way we could look at some of the water cleanup Vancouver Lake, knowing that that's still kind of an amorphous project in and of itself. We may not have something construction-ready, but what comes to mind is that, you know, our local delegation is still trying to get some of the money through ecology for this study so that we can start to work. And perhaps that might be something if we will know pretty soon whether that's in the budget or not. So perhaps if it's not, maybe that would be something that we could look to the feds for. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think getting funding for a study on an appropriation is always politically challenging because they usually want to see something a little bit more concrete, but it's definitely something that's worth asking. To say it's the initial money and there's likely to be something more substantial and that historically the state has supported it, though it was vetoed by the governor at the beginning of the COVID pandemic. So, yeah, I'll take a look at the budgets when they come out, you know, in the next couple of days and then look at that. So that's at least a more defined proposal, so that would be something that would be more ready to go.
And with regard to Vancouver Lake, isn't there something that's a little bit more substantial there about, I don't know whether you call it dredging, but there's a channel there that needs to be cleared out so that there's more flow?
There is the flushing channel, and there's certainly work to be done. I think that it's a matter of, there's not one clear solution on the water quality issues within Vancouver Lake. There are a number of different folks that have different recommendations for the best way to go about it. So we would need to more, better define what that would look like and get a project cost estimate. But I can reach out to our clean water folks and say, is there anything in the works? What, you know, is there anything for which if you had a million, a million and a half, that you could say, this would be shovel-ready, this would definitely make an improvement, and we could go forward from there. So it's worth asking.
Okay, any further discussion on this right now?
Well, so that just raises a couple of comments. The first is, you know, we do a really good job of studying, pushing off, fearful of doing the wrong thing. I mean, friends of Lake Vancouver really have made great strides in identifying concrete projects that need to occur, from the flushing channel to chemical and physical removal. We've addressed the mill foil, at least hopefully successfully. I understand that our own county has been testing Fallen Leaf Lake and perhaps Round Lake and Lackamas Lake. As much as I've been trying to get work done on that and in our interlocual agreement, I have seen no evidence of any of that testing having been done or what the results are. I mean, and we know that both lakes, or all the lakes, need air and they're both oxygen-starved. And there are concrete steps that could be taken to add air, either passively or through nanotechnology and other mechanisms. I mean, there are concrete things we could do as a pilot study if people aren't afraid or are afraid to go after it in earnest. But I'm concerned, and I know Kathleen, I was going to send you a separate email because I've heard from a constituent that substantial testing, both privately and by the county, was done on the lakes surrounding Lackamas, and yet I've heard nothing about it.
I can follow up with staff. I've not heard that, but I can see what we have done and see where those results are.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing, maybe we'll revisit this again for Murray's request and kind of solidify a little bit more what we'd like to do there. Any, okay, so we are going to move.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Last Monday, I asked a question about a particular bill that I'd heard that was under consideration in Olympia with regard to recording interrogations. Or, and Lindsay, we did get some feedback from Josh on that. Did you want to touch on that briefly? Because that could have some significant impact on our path forward.
Sure. So what she's benching, and I'm pulling up the bill right now, is House Bill 1223. And this bill, I'm checking the status. And it passed both chambers. We're still waiting the governor's signature. So this is a state mandate. We don't yet know from the budgetary standpoint what, if any amount is going to be included in the final budget. But what it would do is require law enforcement officers to electronically record custodial interrogations under certain circumstances. So if the interrogation is related to a juvenile or felony, or if the interrogation is at a jail, a police station, sheriff's station, holding cell, or another correctional or detention facility, those interrogations would be required to be electronically recorded. And if it happened at a jail, police station, or detention facility, it would have to be both audio and video. And so essentially, this is kind of a mandate for body cameras or similar technology to be used. The fiscal note is really vague. That's typical. Fiscal notes are better when it's a state expense as opposed to a local government expense. And so the fiscal note estimates $20 million for local governments. I think that, you know, there's probably a plus or minus $10 million on one side or the other of that, just to give you an idea of the fact that this really isn't defined down well. I did send this to Taylor. I know there's going to be questions in terms of what constitutes an interrogation. Is any discussion with a law enforcement official an interrogation? How are they going to define that? You know, I think that arguably if you have a law enforcement agency where everybody has body cameras and dash cameras for everything, you know, then there's no question that they would meet that obligation. But what is the obligation for an agency that doesn't have body cameras or dash cameras? What is sufficient enough for an audio and visual recording? And what constitutes an interrogation, which this requirement will be met? That being said too, the governor could veto it. It's not law yet, but it has passed both chambers. And so it's a requirement that's coming, and we'll see what, if any, state funding comes to support that.
Does that cover what you wanted to cover, Councillor Olson?
Yeah, I just wanted to give everybody kind of a heads up on what might be coming up.
Yeah, not good. I mean, might be good to record it. I see the public records crisis there.
Yeah, and there's the vagueness of the bill.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, without further ado, we're going to adjourn our council time and go into two executive sessions regarding real estate, RCW 423110B and RCW 423110C, for a total of 20 minutes, and one pending litigation for a total of 20 minutes. Legal counsel will be present, and I don't see any action here afterwards. Is that correct? Okay. We are adjourned. Council time, I'll see you on the other side for our executive session.